Good evening. It's Thursday, June 21st, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Claussen to order. Could everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Victoria, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Diane Smith, present. Mr. Cook.
Present.
Mr. Hildebrandt.
Present.
Mr. Parker.
Present.
Mr. Sinaki.
Present.
Ms. Scripture.
Here.
Ms. Cindy Smith.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our newest alternate, Greg Hildebrandt, to the board. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Everybody was sent the minutes in an email earlier this week, and then everybody should have gotten a hard copy from last month's meeting. Are there any comments, questions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of May 17th, 2018, as written.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Support.
We have a motion and support. Victoria, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Sinaki.
Yes.
Ms. Scripture.
Yes.
Ms. Cindy Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Diane Smith.
So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing and consideration of request for certain variances for property located at 250 East 14 Mile Road in the city center district as follows. Chapter 34 Land Development Regulations, Article 10, zoning, Division 19 Supplemental Regulations, Section 34-1056 E3, requirements for parking lot screening in the city center district. Item 2, Chapter 36 Sign Regulations, Section 36-3F, nonconforming signs, to allow the reuse of an existing nonconforming sign. Item 3, Chapter 36 Sign Regulations, Section 36-9, nonresidential sign regulations, to allow pole sign in the city center district. Before I call our planner up to the podium, I would like to say we have a full board here today, plus we have our two alternates, Mr. Cook and Mr. Hildebrandt, and they will participate in discussion, but only the full board will be voting on the items tonight. Greg, would you like to?
Sure. So we had a review in your packet, but let me briefly explain where we are and what we're dealing with. So this is a site that's located on the south side of 14 Mile Road between Pear and Renshaw, and it's within an area that is governed by a shared parking agreement amongst the various businesses in there. On one side of this building is Renshaw Lounge. The other side is the restaurant over there that changes its name all the time. Whose name I've not forgotten, but you know what I'm talking about. All ported. And so if you look at your drawing, I'll try to scroll in a little bit on this screen, this site is actually just an area that the lot that this building sits on is, there's a lot, the west line of the property is co-terminus with the west side of the building that you see marked on your drawing there is House of Optical. And then the east property line is the dashed line that you see over there just before you get to the old port parking. So it's not, you know, there's not a lot, and this is important to one of the variance requests tonight, there's not really an evident and logical demarcation of where the property lines are on the property. It appears to be part of a larger development, but it is not, and it is separately owned. And that parking is shared, but it's shared pursuant to an agreement amongst the various property owners to do so, not because it's a commonly owned property. So we have a couple more things on the site. The site is 0.58 acres, and the existing building on the site is 3,993 square feet. They have been through a site plan review before the planning commission. This is the proposed new home of House of Optical. Interestingly enough, they're kind of switching places with Discount Fabrics, who was formerly in this space, and is moving to the building that they are currently in on West 14 Mile. They own this building and are proposing to renovate and move to this building in the future. So as part of the site plan review, we found that their proposal, in order to be approved, would require a couple of variances. One is from the land development regulations, as you said, which is the Section 34-1056E3. So in the city center district now, and this is relatively new, I guess I want to say as of last year, but when we amended that district consistent with the new downtown master plan, we put form-based zoning in place there. And what is required now when you have a parking lot adjacent to a street, like is in this, is the situation here, is that there be a screening wall, a low screening wall that we call a knee wall, or alternatively, a ornamental fence and hedge to screen the parking that would be about 30 inches high, 30 to 36 inches high, as a screen. So they are asking for variance from the requirements to put that in. And then they have a variance request to reuse the existing sign that's on the site. Yep, there you go, which looks like that. It would look like that if it had their copy in it, but the physical structure, the pole and the frame are what exist and what formerly had the Discount Fabric sign in it. So again, because this is a city center district, the way that district is set up as a form-based district now, it contemplates that all buildings would be built at what's called the build-to line, but what we would commonly call the right-of-way line. So the idea is that buildings should be all the way at the front of the property. So given that, it doesn't contemplate the need for freestanding signs because buildings would be at the street, and it only provides for wall signs. And so they would like, because their building is not at the street, as you can see from their site plan, they're setback some ways, they would like a variance to allow them to keep that sign. As it turns out, they need a variance from two different provisions of the sign regulations, one that required all such nonconforming signs to have been removed by December 31st, 2014, and another that does not allow such signs in the city center district. So that's their request. There are two different sets of standards that relate to their two requests, because one arises out of the zoning ordinance and one arises out of the sign regulations. So you have a different set of findings that you're supposed to make with respect to each of those. So I'll start with the parking lot screening first. First, I've set forth for you the requirement, which is essentially, as I described, that there'd be a screen wall there along the backside of the sidewalk to screen the parking area. What they would say about that are two things, I think. I think they do say it in their application. One, that the wall would not, I can hear myself, would not really make sense, existing only on their property, because there's no, as I described before, there's no logical separation point, and it would just kind of look strange. It would begin and end at points that are not related to any particular features on the ground. And then number two, and more importantly, if you look at the actual dimensions between the front of their building and the sidewalk, they are already nonconforming as it relates to the depth of the parking spaces that are perpendicular to 14 Mile Road and the width of that aisle. And so that's a set distance between there, assuming that the building's not going to move, which we are assuming. And so to build the wall, you would have to make that distance even shorter. And so then you would either lose depth in the parking spaces, or you would lose width in the drive aisle, neither of which they contend it would be a desirable situation. So in going through the findings, you're charged under the zoning ordinance to grant dimensional variances only in cases where there are practical difficulties that are evident in the application. And there are five standards that you're to use to evaluate whether or not that is so. And I will read each standard, because these are the findings that you'll want to make if you are inclined to grant the variance. Number one, the practical difficulties are exceptional and peculiar to the property of the person requesting the variance and results from conditions which do not exist generally throughout the city. In relation to that finding, we observe that it is existing improvements on the site that prevent the installation of the screening, and you cannot do so without causing either parking spaces or the aisle, or both, to become more nonconforming. And so we did feel like that was a peculiar practical difficulty that relates to this property, which is not typical of all properties in the district. Number two, the practical difficulties which will result from a failure to grant the variance include substantially more than mere inconvenience or inability to attain a financial return. Again, I mean, kind of the same point, installation of the screening wall would make either the adjacent spaces, the adjacent aisle, are both more nonconforming than they already are, which would be undesirable. It's not related to the cost of doing so. Number three, allowing the non-use dimensional variance will result in substantial justice being done, considering the public benefits intended to be secured by this article, the individual hardships that will be suffered by a failure of the board to grant the variance, and the rights of others whose property would be affected by the allowance of the variance. While not, so our comment is, while not allowing, not providing the wall will deprive the public of the screening that would be required today in the city center district, in our opinion, this is less significant than the potential for the loss of parking spaces or creating less safe parking spaces and drive aisles. Number four, the variance did not arise from the actions of the applicant or the previous landowner. I mean, I guess in the sense that the previous landowner built the building, you might say that was so, but in reality, this circumstance that we're faced with rises from a change in the ordinance at a time, building was conforming when it was built, and now we have a situation where it's nonconforming. And it's practically difficult to make it conforming without extreme measures that would be unwarranted. And then number five, the requested variance is not based solely on financial need or circumstances. And again, this is an issue of the practicality of constructing the wall, not, in our opinion, the cost of constructing the wall. So we feel like those standards have been met. If you feel that there would be conditions that you need to make sure that the variance is appropriate, that is within your purview to require such conditions, we did not feel any would be necessary in this circumstance, but that would be right. If you were inclined to grant this variance, I would suggest you adopt those findings as your own in support thereof. Do you want me to go on with the sign now, or do you want to deal with the zoning?
The wall, can we start?
Yeah.
Do this first?
Absolutely.
So I have two questions.
Okay.
I can't, and I really should memorize. Is this in the DDA district or not?
City center, yeah.
So it is? That's what I thought. Okay. I thought it was, but I wanted to make sure. So, I mean, I totally get what you're saying, just quick questions. A, so that's going to be a permanent issue, because it's three separate owners. I mean, from the sounds of it, there's never going to be a way to get any of these, even if the other two went through site plan, same thing would come up. There's never going to be a way to get this, for all the reasons stated here, in that hole, correct?
Yeah, I mean, absent losing parking, yes.
Right. And I'm not trying to suggest that. So is there an alternative to the knee wall in the sense of, because something decorative? Because I know that's kind of one of the DDA's things, is at least wherever possible to make better style, better aesthetics. Can't do a brick wall, and I get all those reasons. Is there any kind of, you know, like a iron type thing, I mean, aesthetic something that could be an alternative? That would not, that would not cause any of these problems?
Yeah.
Because you've got those two things on the side there, the two trees, that kind of provide a natural little thing if you're not doing a big thing.
Right. So there is a, you know, I mean, as I looked at it, I thought about, well, there are, you know, those two islands there, and, you know, would that be logical? So there's, you know, of course, as I say, there's two different things. There's like, you know, how logical is it going to appear being an improvement only on this site as opposed to what appears to be the total site? And are there points of, you know, logical breaks on the ground where that might make sense? And then there's the dimensional issues. The, well, the ordinance does, as you can see, allow also for an ornamental fence, that is supposed to come with a hedge. So, you know, you couldn't accomplish it that way, right? I mean, could you put a fence along there? Unclear that that could be accomplished on their property, right? And unclear that the city would want it on theirs, I guess is what I would say.
So the answer's kind of no.
Kind of no. I mean, I get a lot of pushback from Harry, you know, as it is, about the knee walls that aren't on his right-of-way, so.
Well, and I get to talk to Joan on a regular basis, so, you know. Okay. I mean, and that's kind of what I thought, but I thought it was at least worth asking. So that's my only question, then.
It is a shame that there's not a solution that could work for the whole group of properties. But, you know, I mean, there's always hope for the future. They have a mechanism in place for, you know, shared parking area as a whole, projects that they would share the cost of. You know, that is more likely the way that such a thing would happen.
And if they do that, that would come in for site plan review, because it's, so we'd get a chance to look at it at the planning commission?
I would think that would be so.
Yeah, so, okay.
Is the city sidewalk right next to the lot line?
Yeah, I believe it's right up to the lot line.
And there must be some mechanism for all of those parking spaces that are currently there that parked vehicles don't stick into the sidewalk. Are there curbs?
Well, there's a curb there.
There's a curb.
But they probably do overhang the curb to some degree. I mean, it's a very wide sidewalk.
And then the other question that I have is relative to the zoning ordinance, and does this particular request for a variance only deal with this particular site plan review, or does this run with the land? In other words, if something came in and they were redeveloping the site, does that change the circumstances and allow the system?
The variance runs with the land, so in relieving the site of that requirement, now you could condition it in such a way that, for example, if the building were ever torn down, that would eviscerate the variance, and they would need to, at that point, comply. Because that's the thing that is really creating the practical difficulty in terms of having the space. If you're focused more on the dimensional issue related to the park, depth of parking and the aisle, if you're focused more on the logic of having, you know, this much wall and this much site, then that's not going to change even if the ownership changes, unless all the parcels were combined, which I think is unlikely, but.
Would there ever be a, could you put some sort of stipulation that if either owner had, either owner on the other side of them put their knee wall in or put their fence in, that they would be required to do that?
You could, and you could, and another way of saying that might be that they would be required to participate in any such improvement that the shared parking district as a whole would undertake.
So that would be reasonable to say if somebody came up with this new magic thing, and maybe they redid the parking floor or something like that, and all of a sudden it changed for the, because we've done this with this area before with this parking shared thing, that if they came up with a different solution, they would be?
Required to participate.
Required to participate?
Yeah, that would be a reasonable condition.
Could you say that again?
So if the shared parking agreement properties as a whole undertook to create the required screening wall, that this property would be required to participate.
Good call on that.
How long is that shared parking agreement effective for? Is it like a 99-year?
I think it's in, I mean, as far as I know, it's in perpetuity, but I don't recall expiration on it.
And these three parcels that reside within this shared parking agreement are owned by three separate individuals?
There's actually four. The Big B, Coffey parcel there is also in the district.
I have a question, actually, and if you mentioned this, I apologize, but is there height and width requirements for the, for the structure that would have to go in there?
You mean the knee wall?
Well, the height is, as I say, 30 inches high. It's just, you know, just high enough to block the wheels on a car. The width is more a function of the materials that are used. You know, as I say, it's allowed to be just a fence, but in the circumstance where it's a fence, it's supposed to be in conjunction with a hedge. And so you end up having, I mean, for that, for that configuration, you end up having to have about five feet.
So it's not just a fence? It's got to be enough room for a fence and a hedge?
Correct. Now, fence might be a compromise as opposed to nothing, but again, I mean, you can kind of see where the, you see the dashed line there, which is the right-of-way line, and you see that in relationship to the curb. And as we talked about, those spaces being 19 feet deep, you know, your standard space is 20 feet deep, and so, you know, your cars are going to tend to overhang that curb. So you really don't have room on the property itself without going into the right-of-way.
Without taking into the parking spots.
Seems like a reasonable request. It's a tough one.
So are there any other questions before we move on to the sign issues?
Do you need separate motions, or do?
Well, you could handle them that way, and I don't know how you want to handle public comments, if you want to deal with those as we're talking about the particular issues, or wait till the end and deal with the public comments altogether. I would say if you're gonna, unless you're going to separate the public comments, then we should move on with the analysis, because we want all the public comments before we make our decisions.
That's what I would recommend if anybody's.
I agree.
Opposed. Okay.
Could we, could we draft a finding of facts now, while it's in our mind?
Yeah, that's what I was worried about, because I knew you'd be, have two different things.
If we draft a finding of facts now, and we could say that that's just based on this discussion, and then we'll just leave it open, and then revisit it?
Sure.
For consensus and approval afterwards?
Okay.
I guess if that's, if that's what you'd like to do, I would recommend we have the applicant.
Applicant first, yes.
Come and talk, come and talk just about this particular portion.
Do you want to speak to that issue?
We could have public comments on this, and then we could do it.
I'm a Chester Steppian architect. The issue of a screen certainly isn't consistent with lots adjacent to this particular site. And the City of Claussen already has a nice row of trees landscaping. There's a big buffer there already. So aesthetically, I can't see what an ornamental fence would do. It would just be standing by itself, especially with shared parking. They'd be wondering, why is this particular site just screened from everything else? The other issue is there's an existing monument sign, which apparently was before the board.
We're not to the sign, yeah.
We're not to the sign, okay, okay. We'll just stick with that. So as far as the aesthetics of the site, the planning commission recommended certain plants to be addressed in these planting islands, and they seem to have agreed about the fence, but of course, they're not empowered to make any decision on it. So we would like to have that fence idea passed until a future date. If other sites have to do that, then of course, we would be amenable to doing what the other people are doing. But a fence by itself just, I don't think makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions at this point for the applicant?
Nope.
I think we should just open up one public hearing after we get done.
It's up to you.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. So is everybody ready to move on to the sign issue?
I think.
No, he wanted to do the finding of facts.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Which, would it be the points one through five is provided by our planner?
Plus adding the?
Plus we wanted to add commentary if the building were to be razed or demolished. That would be void.
Yeah, that would be a condition. So then, yeah, your findings would be, I mean, I would recommend they're one through five. If you have other thoughts, that's certainly fine. And then it's conditioned, subject to the condition that, and as we discussed, that if the other properties are undertaking such a project, that they are required to participate.
I need to read this, because in one through five, do you recall that you state that this is one parcel out of, in the middle of four, with the shared parking agreement? I guess that would be, I would like to add that as number six to the finding of facts, because then I believe that that would be a basis for a condition that we put on with respect to remediation afterwards, and if we state that it's, it's recognized that it's one parcel in the center of four that are under a shared parking agreement. And this is basically a condition related to the parking type of aspect of it. So the?
You could add that to number one, I would say, to your findings under number one.
I think it makes more clear. That's good.
Okay, so Cindy, were you making a motion?
No, I thought we were holding the motion until after the commentary on the other two requests.
Oh, that's all right, too.
Yeah, because you want to get your public comments first.
Right.
Okay, ready to move on to signs?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay. So as I said, the sign issue arises because this is the city center district and, and pole signs aren't contemplated. It's contemplated the wall signs would be used. That sign was by ordinance to have been removed by now, but the city's policy is to only require that at the time of site plan review and property changes hands or something, some activity triggers that other than the site's just continued use of the sign. And so this is the time when that issue arises. We have more findings related to the sign variance request, 14. So I will go through those to guide the discussion and I'll give you our thoughts on each one. Number one, does the proposed sign represent the business it is intended to identify? That appears to be true. Number two, is the sign appropriate to the business identified so as not to cause confusion or mislead the public? We do not believe it would be misleading to the public. Centrally located along the site's not 114 mile road, but 14 mile road frontage. Number three, is the sign appearance compatible with the visual character of the surrounding area regarding scale and placement to the building, relationship of color to adjacent colors, dissimilarity of shape to other signs in the surrounding, it should be area, similarity of lettering to other signs in the surrounding area? So the overall height of the sign is eight feet, which is consistent with the height that's allowed for monument signs, but it's not a monument style sign. Its area is just less than 24 square feet. And so it is consistent with the size allowed for such signs in the city generally. And it is also consistent with the height and style of the signs used by the two businesses that are located on either side of this property, Old Port and Renshaw Lounge. On the other hand, the newer building at the west end of this block that contains Marconi's Pizza and Big B Coffee, which is set back the same distance as this building, on the subject property utilizes only wall signs as contemplated by ordinance. Number four, is the sign legible from its intended location? In our opinion, the answer to that's yes. Is the sign intended, number five, is the sign intended to be integrated into the character of the building as to the entrance and the architectural features? The sign is being reused as is, however, the building is also being reused essentially as is without any architectural alterations. Number six, can the sign be viewed with comfort by pedestrians? Yes, it's at or near eye level for people on the public sidewalk. Seven, if located on the ground, is the proposed sign outside the clear vision triangle create no obstruction to vehicles entering and exiting the site? The proposed sign would not be within the clear vision triangle. Number eight, does the sign reflect the character of Claussen as opposed to emphasizing a national symbol? It's a simple box sign. As you can see, it does not utilize a national symbol. Number nine, does the location of the sign obscure the store interior or its merchandise? No, it will not. Number 10, does the proposed sign significantly depart from the applicable provisions of this chapter? So the proposed sign is a type that is no longer permitted in this district because the city center district contemplates buildings being built at or near the right-of-way line. It's assumed that wall signs would be sufficient for businesses in this district, however, this business is located further back from the right-of-way than would be expected. Number 11, if a projecting sign, are there guy wires, so on and so forth? It's not a projecting sign. That finding doesn't apply. Number 12, if illuminated, is the light source hidden from view? Is glare sufficiently shielded? Is any electrical raceways exposed? Is the lighting compatible with surrounding light sources? This will be an internally illuminated sign. Number 13, such a variance may be granted in those instances in which there has been a demonstrated showing by the applicant that the particular sign sought to be approved as suitable to the community or has some value that comports with the history development of the community and would not, if a variance were granted, be materially in conflict with the applicable regulations for the district in which the sign is located. The sign is not unique or architecturally or historically significant. And number 14, signage proposed as the basis for the appeal does not result in the perpetuation of a sign that no longer conforms to existing sign regulations. So the sign is of a sort that does not conform to existing sign regulations. That said, sign for which variance is granted is by definition not in conformity with the sign regulations. In our opinion, if you find that the sign is necessary to serve the building because it is set back further than would otherwise be anticipated, then the sign could be found to be of a sort that should be allowable under the ordinance, under those circumstances. So our opinion is that those findings are substantially met. If that is your opinion, then you could grant that variance. And again, as with the other variance request, you could attach conditions if you saw that as being appropriate under the circumstances. Could you answer any questions?
I have a question on the wall mural that's being added on the east elevation. So because it's a mural, is that not considered a sign?
The zoning ordinance, I think it's actually in the zoning ordinance and not in the sign regulations, as I recall, but I might be mistaken about that. But in any event, the ordinance allows for murals to be approved by the planning commission subject to certain limitations on how much copy they can have and whether there's artistic merit to them and such. So the planning commission did approve that, that mural for the side of the building.
Okay.
Is there any intent to put a sign on the front of that too? Or is not at all? On the, the front of the building? So leaving it just blank the way, okay, so no additional sign?
Right.
Nobody cares at all about my opinion, but that is an ugly sign. Just saying.
So anything that can be done, you know, and this is an issue that's going to be coming before the planning commission, oddly enough, for a show cause hearing, even though they have no site plan, not next meeting, but the one after that. The Chutney sign that was lowered to comply with the current ordinance, so that is not in the city center district next door. And they are allowed to have a monument type sign. But a monument type sign, which meets these dimensional criteria, is supposed to be on a masonry base. And so they, they were allowed to lower that, but on the condition that they construct a masonry base around the pole.
Are you talking about like Renshaws?
I don't have
I have, I'm looking at a picture of it. Renshaw's got a
Yeah.
A brick base around it.
Right.
Which I actually like the plants better than the brick base at Renshaw.
So that's another thing. I mean, once you construct that, you take up more room, create more mass and so on.
No, I'm just, sign itself.
But that, a norm, if this were a, a normal freestanding sign in the city where those are allowed, it would be required to have a base under it.
I'm kind of glad it doesn't because it looks better with the plants and we need green stuff and not more concrete. But I actually don't have an issue with the three in a row because you got three in a row. You've got Renshaw, well, it's now the fabric thing, and then the ever-changing restaurant sign. So even though Big B doesn't have one, whether that was fair or not, or however that worked, that's not what we're talking about. You know, at least there's three in a row. They're all of the same way. They don't look bad. I mean, they're, they're not, they're not that obtrusive. And if they're staying on one little pole and keeping it, I mean, it just doesn't bother me. I don't think it looks bad. And I like the fact it's not in the big brick block. And it's got pretty plants. Keep the plants pretty.
Are there any, oh, go ahead, Ed.
Can you remind us, what is the allowable wall signage for this parcel if, based on the ordinance?
I believe it's 24 square feet, but I'd have to double check that.
And is it, is it implied or does it need to be stated that this is the, the variance that allows the street side pole sign is a substitute for the similar sized wall sign?
You would need to state that if that's your condition for granting the variance.
Is, is that historically what we have done?
There are occasions elsewhere in the ordinance where one can trade one sort of sign for another like that. Usually it's the other way around, that you get more wall signs if you don't have a freestanding sign, but that would be an appropriate condition, I would say.
But would that permanently attach to this then?
For so long as they had that sign, you know.
I guess when the applicant gets up, we'll ask what their intent is. Because I know there are signage issues that this board has approved that has wall signage and, um, street side signage. The city's, the Westgate District, I think, has a lot of that. So I'm just trying to figure out what, what we need to do here.
Yeah, elsewhere where freestanding signs are allowed, they're, they're not in lieu of wall signs or they're both allowed, up to a maximum.
I don't have a problem with one on the building. When I asked that question, I just wondered if they were going to double dip on that or this was their
So, and then just to clarify, if we would approve this today, we're approving that particular sign. So if the business changes and the signage changes, they would have to come back as long as our ordinance didn't change?
Um, I think the appropriate way to treat it would be as long as it's not structurally changed, the variance would continue.
I mean, they could change the content.
They could change the content.
But I was going to say.
But if the ownership, if the ownership changes and they have to get a new site plan?
Maybe it would run with the land.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, this, the variance goes with the, goes with it, right?
Right, unless you condition it
I would condition it, I would, I would suggest conditioning it based upon the shared parking agreement, that if there was some kind of remediation that changed the situation
That would stretch over to the sign too.
That everybody would be doing something similar, so.
I mean, same concept as the wall.
Yes, same concept. That's what I would suggest when we get to that point.
Is there anything else for McKenna? Okay. I'd like to invite the applicant back up here to discuss the sign issue.
Well, of course, House of Optical would like to keep the sign where it is. And it's consistent with signs in that immediate area. Apparently it went before the board at one time because it had like a 15-foot-high pole sign, which was brought down. So there was a time when it must have gone before the board and was approved. And we're not doing anything else to it other than trying to reuse it.
Did you want to ask any questions about?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. So it's 8:14. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public wishing to speak on either of these matters, the dimensional variance or the sign? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. First, I'd like to get consensus that we're going to split the findings of fact, one for the screening wall, and then we'll do a separate one for the signage. And then we probably should have a motion on each one of those also because they don't kind of go together.
Two different ordinances, yeah.
Okay. Is everybody agreeing?
Yep.
All right, well, let's address the parking lot screening first.
Cindy already did this one.
Sure. I'd like to propose a motion to approve the land request for variance regarding Chapter 34, Land Development Regulations, Article 10, Zoning Division 19, Supplemental Regulation, Section 34-1056E3, Requirements for Parking Lot Screening in the City Center District, Based on the Findings of Fact as Provided by McKenna and Associates Planning. Number one, the practical difficulties are exceptional and peculiar to the property of the person requesting the variance and results from conditions which do not generally apply throughout the city, including that we have recognized that this is unique as it's one parcel of four combined under a shared parking agreement. There will be conditions applied. The second findings of fact are the practical difficulties which would result in a failure to grant the variance include substantially more the mere inconvenience or an inability to attain a higher financial return. The third finding of fact, allowing the non-used dimensional variance will result in substantial justice being done, considering the public benefits intended to be secured by this article, the individual hardships that would be suffered by a failure of the board to grant a variance, and the rights of others whose property would be affected by the allowance of the variance. The fourth finding of fact, the variance did not arise from the actions of the applicant or previous landowner other than the building of the improvement. The fifth finding of fact, the request variance is not based solely on financial need or circumstances. Additional conditions would apply as if the building were to be demolished or razed, then the findings of facts would not apply and therefore the variance would be void. The second condition would be that they would be required to participate in any shared parking agreement changes if the other parcels within that shared parking agreement put together a fence or hedges or anything like that just to keep the uniformity of the site plan. And any other comments or additions you would like to add?
Thank you, Cindy.
If there's no further discussion, I support.
Okay. We have a motion and support. Victoria, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sinaki?
Yes.
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Ms. Cindy Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Diane Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. So the next issue that appeared before us was the, the two requests for the sign, nonconformities.
Do we want to just finish that up and make them, make a motion to approve, approve or deny the variance based upon the findings of fact?
Well, she, she made a motion to approve.
The findings of facts.
That's what I thought she said, too.
No, I put in the motion to approve the variance based on the findings of fact.
My error. I heard that wrong.
I heard it wrong, too. That's okay.
Victoria, can you read that back, please?
Not at this time, but it was my understanding that she said to approve the item as well, including the findings of fact.
Perfect.
Would you care to re-vote on that, just so everybody understands exactly what we were voting on?
My vote's the same.
Mine's the same. I heard
It would be fine. Okay. Very good.
Motion carried. Thank you. And so let's move on to the two variances requested for the sign issue. Thank you, and so let's move on to the two variances requested for the sign issue.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion regarding the freestanding sign. That would be in reference to Chapter 36, Sign Regulations, 36-3F, Nonconforming Signs to Allow the Use of an Existing Nonconforming Sign, and Chapter 36, Sign Regulations, Section 36-9, Nonresidential Sign Regulations, to Allow a Pole Sign in the City Center District. This motion for approval is based upon the finding of facts identified in the McKenna letter. There's 14 bullets. I'll summarize. It does appear that the proposed sign represents the business that is intended to identify. Number two, the sign is appropriate and does not cause confusion or misleading the public. The sign's appearance is similar to the signs for three of the four parcels in this shared parking agreement, and based upon the setback of those buildings, it's consistent with other decisions that have been made with respect to the signs. Number four, is the sign legible? Yes. Is the sign intended into integrating the character of the buildings and entrance? The building and the sign are basically being used without architectural alterations. Number six, can the sign be viewed from the public? This particular sign is not located in any traffic clear vision triangle and pretends no obstruction to vehicles entering or exiting the site. Does the sign reflect the character of Clausen? It's not, it's a simple sign, it doesn't have any Clausen or national symbol to it, and the sign does not-- Number nine, the sign does not obscure the store's interior. Does the proposed sign-- Number 10, does the proposed sign significantly depart from the application's provisions by the, of the chapter? Yes. It's no longer permitted in the city center district. However, this business is located further back from the right-of-way than would be expected, and this particular property is one in the center of four properties that have a shared parking agreement that face 14-mile. So there's a consistency that could be achieved by reuse of the pole sign. Number 11, it's not a projecting sign. And number 12, the sign is internally illuminated. Number 13, the sign is not unique or architecturally or historically significant. And number 14, the proposed basis for the appeal does not in the perpetuation of a sign that is no longer, and it no longer conforms to the sign regulations. That is true, the sign regulations were changed in the city center district, and pole signs are not allowed, but in this case, based upon the combined findings of fact and the shared parking agreement, it could be served as reasonable to continue the use of the pole sign. I would propose a condition that we add to this, that the aesthetics of this pole sign, and right now I'm referring to the base and the way it is, not the content of the sign, because we're allowing this reuse, should be and can be addressed by the planning commission as to the aesthetic appearance and what they would suggest to, to be compatible with the other three signs on this shared property.
They already did.
Yeah, they already approved it, then. They approved it as long as you've granted the variance. This one, unlike some others recently, has already been to the planning commission.
But believe me, no planning commission meeting goes by without us talking about plants. It just doesn't happen. So I'm sure we mentioned that, plants, plants, make it pretty.
Right, there's a landscape plan associated with the base of the sign.
Yes, and the reason I brought that up is because comparing to the monument sign, that's a planning condition thing. I'm just going back to the compatible sign that's at the--
Renshaw.
Old Port Inn. And when that sign was allowed to be modified to be a, not as tall, but continued as a pole sign, there were some aesthetics that were directed by the planning commission that we added as a condition because that brings it together.
Would you mind if I just add one sentence to item finding number three?
Sure, go ahead.
That the height of this sign at eight feet is consistent with the height of other monument signs required in the city.
You mean required in the city, or do you mean in the line that we're looking at?
No, it's--
Yeah, but both would be true. The allowable height for a monument sign generally is eight feet, and I think the neighboring signs are eight feet as well.
And I'm only adding the, in line with three, because the point was made about it being different from the Big B, so at least it kind of helps emphasize why we're saying yes to this, and--
Now, are we going to condition that there will be no additional front wall sign because of this freestanding sign we're permitting? Or are we going to allow a wall sign as well?
I'm fine with allowing a wall sign, but that might just be me.
I know I brought it up, and I thought about it, but then I thought about all the stuff that's in the Westgate District that has road signs, and then it has--
And the wall sign.
And the planning commission would do that, and I would expect that the 24-square-feet would be maintained.
I'm naming your 24-square feet up there.
And so if, if they wanted to do it, I don't see any reason to condition it at this time, because it's, it's not really consistent with other decisions that we've made regarding to buildings that are set back.
Okay. Did we add the condition about, and we might have, and I missed it in the long list, did we add the same thing we did on the first one, because I thought that's what you said you wanted to do, that said if the four properties change, there's something they would address?
Oh, I did not add that, and that is very true.
I think we said we--
The verbiage that we used in the, in the, in the previous motion with respect to the sign, so adding a, adding a condition to this, that based upon this is one parcel of a four-parcel shared parking agreement, this parcel would be required to participate in anything that dealt with the shared parking and the appearance and consistency of signage along the 14-mile road, which is where this is sitting. That would be a condition added, in addition to the condition of the aesthetics.
And I second that.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussions before we take roll? Okay, Victoria, can you take the roll, please?
Ms. Scripture.
Yes.
Ms. Cindy Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Diane Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Sanaki.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for maintaining your business in Clausen.
When is the target date of the big move?
Probably about six weeks.
Oh.
You know, we've been down the street for 20 years.
Right.
Are you still going to be there, though? Because I actually need to come in and get new glasses, sorry. Are you still working through the whole time, or--
I want to bid on the city contract.
You're open over, you're still--
The existing building, yes, the actual lease there goes further, but our timing to move should be hopefully end of July, first part of August at the very latest. Scott, I am on the way here in that canoe.
Are you expanding your eyeglass selection at the new place? Should I strategically wait to go?
No, it's going to be the same.
Okay.
Because we've been down the street 20 years, but the landlord didn't want to extend, so this building came up and we bought it and then rented it to the fabric shop until our lease ran out. We had three years to go, it's running out in the fall, so we just bought this building. But the number of frames, we have one of the largest, it'll still be the same, it'll be beautiful, it'll be one of the better-looking, not because I'm used to it.
Thank you.
Great.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I think I gave a lot of my money.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else going on, Greg?
We have other public, we have another public discussion opportunity here, if anybody wants to speak. Anything to say?
All right, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. This is my last morning board of appeals meeting with you, I'm sad to say. City council has seen fit to ask for another McKenna guy to come help you out in the future, and that'll be Mario Ortega, who was supposed to be here tonight for me to introduce him, but he had to go to Lake Orion and cover a meeting up there. And so whenever it is that your next meeting occurs, we don't have any applications pending, Mario will be here to help you out with that one.
Okay.
It's been a pleasure knowing you all.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Hopefully I get to come visit sometime.
Yeah.
We spoke a lot of Marconi's Pizza tonight. Do you know what's going on with that?
Nobody really knows. They have just very, very slowly proceeded with their renovations.
It is still their intent to open shop.
As far as I know, yeah.
I know they're hiring.
They have been for a year.
Yeah, right?
It's confusing.
Good luck on your new endeavors.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. We're adjourned.
Do we have to vote on that?
Make a motion to adjourn? Should I?
She did.
All right.